Okay, all right, we will call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Mr. Checkett.
Phil Light.
Here.
Commissioner Stringer. Commissioner Knapp. Commissioner Whitehouse. Commissioner McCaffrey. Chair Sarter.
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda, Mr. Bird?
No changes on the agenda. Chair, I would point out, since there's not a quorum, the, uh, we wouldn't be able to take action on the minutes, so we should probably postpone that to the upcoming agenda. Um, and this, the item under new businesses are presentation only that doesn't have any action, so we can still proceed with that item.
Okay, perfect, yep, let's move them approval of the minutes to the October meeting. Um, anyone from the public wish to speak on any non-agenda items? No. Okay, we'll skip the minutes and we'll move right into the new business with the staff presentation.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Um, Cody Bird, Planning Director. Um, as we're pulling up the, the presentations here, just a reminder, this is a presentation only. Uh, this is not an action item, so there will be no, no decisions made tonight on this. Um, but I did wanted to take the opportunity to share some upcoming information that we will be talking about uh, at upcoming meetings. Um, a lot of the same information was also presented to the Board of Trustees at one of their regular meetings. So some of this information's already been shared publicly, but this is the first time it's been in front of the Planning Commission. So what we're presenting on tonight, um, are a couple of legislative actions at the state level. Um, one Senate bill and one House bill, they were approved pretty close to each other. Both are affecting turf regulations and irrigation regulations. Um, we have two different timelines for these two different bills, so I'm going to present what those mean for you tonight. My clicker's not advancing the slides. You want to, next slide? Thanks. Okay, so a little bit of background. Um, when you, when you see in your packet in this presentation, you see SB and then some numbers and HB and some numbers. That's short for Senate Bill and House Bill. Um, so these two legislative acts were Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five and House Bill twenty-five dash one 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 three. Um, the, the bills collectively address turf. Um, and irrigation, uh, for commercial and residential properties, but in different ways. The, um, I mean, both of them require municipalities to take an action. So the first one, uh, requires that we do not allow any installation of non-functional turf. Doesn't matter whether it's natural, non-functional turf or artificial, non-functional turf. Non-functional is the operative term there. Um, but we, we can't allow any new developments or redevelopments to install non-functional turf. Um, after December thirty-one of this year. Some of the dates we use January one, others December thirty-one, but they're effectively the same timelines. Um, the prohibitions on non-functional turf, uh, is December thirty-one of this year or January one of twenty twenty-six. The, the second bill is regarding the irrigation of natural turf on residential properties. It's a broader bill, the first one was focused on just commercial and HOA common areas and streetscapes. The second bill is all residential properties and it requires that the town adopt regulations on how that turf is irrigated. That has a longer timeline, it's end of twenty twenty-seven. We're going to talk about both of those. So this first one, as I alluded to, um, and this code language is, is pretty much copied out of some of the, the text and legislation. But we, after twenty, December thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-five, we, as a municipality, we cannot install any non-functional turf, um, or non-functional artificial turf or invasive plant species, that's another element there. And any new development or redevelopment beyond fifty percent. Um, this includes the HOA common areas, which is, is, you know, larger areas that would have these turf areas. Uh, streetscapes, so the space between, uh, sidewalk and the curb. Um, parking lot islands, things of that nature, that's non-functional. Um, and so we're required to pass law that says that that's no longer allowed. That second timeline is, it's a little bit nuanced, um, but it's for the, or the irrigation regulations for those areas. And it still applies to all of the commercial aspects, but it also includes um, and, and a wrinkle on the first bill, um, that it also includes multifamily, uh, developments with twelve units or more. Or more than twelve units, I think is the correct wording in the language in the statute. Um, but it, it adds that multifamily component for twelve or more units. Um, needing to also comply with that. And then it says that all residential properties have to have regulations in place for how they're irrigated. Doesn't say what that regulation has to include. There's going to be some, some local context to how we as a community navigate that for compliance with the statute. Um, and make it fit for our community too. That's going to be a combination of policy, community engagement, uh, working with our Parks and Rec staff for, that are impacted by it. There's going to be a lot more discussion around what that looks like for how we regulate irrigation moving forward. And that's for compliance, um, by end of twenty twenty-seven. Next slide, thanks. So as we've been talking about, uh, turf and non-functional turf, I wanted to just give you some of those definitions, um, as defined in the statute, and we've, we've copied them on this slide too. I won't read them word for word, because I know you guys can do that. But we wanted to kind of dial in on what these terms mean, uh, from a functional standpoint. So turf is basically any living species that collectively creates this dense growth for ground cover. Artificial turf is what it says it is, it's not living plant material, but it still covers the ground. So synthetic fields, football fields, synthetic golf courses, things like that, putting greens. Invasive plant species matches a definition in statutes, it's, it's a list that's published by extension. Um, and the definition is here, but it's basically any kind of plants that are not native or cause detrimental effects. So, next slide. Really want to focus for this, especially for this first effort, this idea of functional turf versus non-functional turf. These are examples, the photos are examples that come from guidance that was put out, um, by the state, by one of their, their agents here with the Brendel Group. Um, and kind of providing the guidance around these, these statutes. The functional turf, and there's a definition here, but in short, it's, it's a purposeful area where you're intending for that bluegrass or fescue blend for the purpose of, it's a recreation field, it's a park area, it's a playground, there's a purpose for why it's there. Um, golf courses, there's a function for why that type of grass might be there. Non-functional turf, on the other hand, are areas where there's really no purpose for that to be grass. So the images we use here are streetscapes, medians, parking lots. No one's going to be in that space playing or taking a break or relaxing. These, these are areas that are more suited for, uh, a different type of landscape treatment uh, that doesn't require use of water or, you know, valuable natural resource. Um, so that non-functional piece is the, is the part that's going to be prohibited at the end of this year. Next slide. So, as staff has kind of evaluated this, we've got these, these two components. Um, the, both have to be addressed through adoption of an ordinance, a law, a policy. Uh, I think a resolution would work for these, but what we've looked at is really the best path for Wellington to take to accomplish this would be to amend our land use code. Our land use code is this, is the section of the municipal code that addresses, um, regulation for landscaping. And currently, we don't have these prohibitions in place, um, so to comply with the shorter timeline for end of this year, we are going to be recommending a public hearing for, um, amending the code to just simply add the prohibitions. We, a couple of years ago, um, developed the Wellington Waterwise Landscape Irrigation Design Manual. This is a standalone document, it's, it's incorporated by reference in the land use code. It says for these areas, refer to this, this other guide for how to do that landscape design and irrigation design for commercial landscapes, basically anything that requires a site plan review refers you to this document as the resource to regulate that. This is a really good document, we put it together a few years ago, and I was really proud of the product that we've got. A lot of what is in this hits on what this new state requirement is intended to address. However, it doesn't use the same terminology, a lot of the guidance is the same, um, including for residential landscapes. But our, our guide or our, our irrigation and design manual currently references the residential landscapes as best practices or recommendations, not as requirements. So we have a few things that we, we think this is a really great document, it definitely provides good guidance and it, and I'm using it myself. It really gets you to where you need to be from an irrigation standpoint and water conservation, conservation measure, which is a lot of the push behind the state legislation. But the wording of this document needs to be updated, we can probably include some new graphics. We need to get it just dialed in to really meet the needs here, and then we'll do that through a public process to engage our parks teams, our, our schools, our public for, uh, how this could impact them and how we help navigate this process. So what, go next slide, please. Perfect, so, um, I, I almost jumped one slide. Um, so was, what I was alluding to is we don't currently prohibit the, um, the non-functional turf pieces. So we'll need to add some definitions for that and then write those prohibitions in accordance with the, the legislative acts. Um, we do have a lot of language in that irrigation design manual that discourages the use of high-water turf grass. Um, we need to align that terminology with the state's terminology to make it effective. Um, and again, our, our irrigation design manual already has good recommendations for low water use and natural grasses in these areas instead of the high-water turf grass. So a lot of that spirit is being met, but we'll need to get it dialed in for it to, to really be effective. I don't think these are complicated changes from a wording standpoint, but certainly the implications for residential properties and the freedom of how they design and irrigate their landscapes will be impacted. So we want to make sure that we really vet this and do it right through this process before we just write the simple code changes. Next slide. Thanks. So this slide kind of lays out how staff is imagining this process rollout. Um, the compliance deadline for the prohibitions on non-functional turf, so again, the areas that are not being actively utilized and doesn't include residential properties, um, needs to be in place by the end of this year. Um, this is for commercial, light industrial, streetscapes, civic uses, HOA common areas, so the large areas, um, that needs to be included. Staff is also recommending, the second bill that has a longer timeline requires the residential properties with more than twelve units be included in that mix. From a, from a town of Wellington standpoint, those commercial, I'm sorry, the, the multifamily projects are reviewed in the same way that a site plan is for a commercial project, so the requirements are already more or less in place for that. So we would include that, even though it's got a longer timeline on it, we're already set up to do it on this pattern. So we would include that in this first step to meet that goal as well. For the longer piece that has to do with how we regulate the irrigation, um, we have another step, which is also a legislative requirement of the state to update our comprehensive plan with a water supply planning element. And that's required to be done by end of twenty twenty-six. It's our belief that the recommendations that are going to be included in that water supply element are going to touch on our water supply planning, our water conservation planning, we have a water efficiency master plan already in place and we've been implementing, but it's in need of an update. It's our belief that the, this water supply element requirement that we'll be working on is going to also inform the irrigation principles that we need to adopt in code. So we would recommend going through that process or at least making substantial progress on it and then beginning the, the code changes around irrigation for residential landscapes and, and how we manage irrigation within the community. Um, that'll be a lot more policy discussion and updates that landscape and irrigation design manual. And we are proposing to budget funds for, for that effort in twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, with the target of completing it by end of twenty twenty-seven. So that's our kind of timeline, and so the reason we're presenting this tonight is because of that short one, by end of this year, we have to have the step one in place. And then kind of informing that there's more work to do on those other pieces and we'll be bringing that forward uh, as the timing dictates for completing some of these other elements. So that's the high-level overview, I know there's a lot more nuance to irrigation, freedom of choice, how we design our residential landscapes and then enforcement of those new regulations. So we're going to navigate all of those at a later date. Um, but we wanted to at least prime this so that the Planning Commission had the information for why we're bringing this forward. We're likely scheduling, uh, public hearing for October, for the October sixth Planning Commission meeting. And then we'll do the same thing for the Board of Trustees, uh, based on Planning Commission recommendations. But for that first step, I do feel like it's a pretty simple code right, but, um, it's that broader implication for how that impacts our community that we want to have that hearing on, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions, I know we've got a little bit of low attendance tonight, so we'll have this recording available for other Planning Commissioners to review and we can share those resources. Um, and I, of course, our staff can answer any questions for those that aren't here, uh, with the goal of being fully informed for an October hearing. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this presentation.
Yeah. No, hang on, there's somebody else that wants to speak before you, I know.
What do they have against artificial turf, although that would look really weird, like in a parking lot? I'm just not really understanding how artificial turf plays into this. And then my other question is, I saw on the last bullet of that last slide that we would start requiring permits for the landscaping and design piece of that. Or would there then be a cost associated with that?
So I'll answer the, the latter question first. Um, in terms of permitting, those are some discussions that we need to have on what that looks like. Um, certainly our, our site plan review for commercial, multifamily, all, all those other ones would be the, associated with the process for review and, and the permitting piece of, of the commercial landscapes. As far as residential, residential goes, our planning staff isn't currently that interested in doing a permit for landscaping, but it does beg the question, how do you ensure compliance without some sort of review? So that'll be some of the discussion that we have on best practices, what's the temperature of the community for, for a permit versus a, you know, a courtesy review and how do we accomplish that and still meet the compliance standards? So we'll be talking about those things, it's certainly not something that our staff is, is particularly interested in creating a more onerous process, but we do have certain limitations that we have to comply with, so we'll work through procedures for how to do that. Um, to your, the first question you asked on, on artificial turf. Again, this is coming from the, the state, but from, from what we can gather, and I'm not a subject matter expert on artificial turf, but what I do know is that it's not water-free. Um, when you install the, the, um, artificial turfs, their recommendations do include rinsing them. Although matter gets stuck in them and it can stagnate and smell pretty bad. So you still need to water your artificial grass to get it rinsed out if, if pet, pets use it for bathrooms and things like that. It needs to be cleaned or it starts to stink. Um, there's also broader components, when, when you install artificial turf, it has an underlayment system for drainage. It, you can't just create all that impervious surface. So most of them have a pretty expensive underdrain system and that water has to go somewhere, so it's, it's a lot of design elements to it. Think there's also, not my personal stance, but I, I believe that there's a strong component to all the synthetic plastics and the artificial turfs that are not particularly good for environment. Um, again, I'm not that subject matter expert, but those are some of the elements that, that we have heard or suspect, uh, for the artificial piece. And again, the, the legislation doesn't prohibit artificial turf, it prohibits non-functional artificial turf. So areas where there's a purpose for it, like a synthetic football field or soccer field for recreation, that it doesn't prohibit communities from installing a synthetic field where that's where they're intending to, you know, sports facilities, golf putting greens, things like that. It prohibits installation of synthetic or artificial turf for your front yard. That may, also may not look very nice, if not done right.
I just didn't know if there was like a prevalence of, you know, fake grass in medians or something that I was unaware of.
This system is cost prohibitive, it is expensive.
I had no idea.
Crazy expensive, that's why you really don't see it aside from, you know, specialty custom landscapes, putting greens, people want to put golf courses in their backyard. I mean, it's, it's a good solution, it does only use about half the water as natural, because you can apply it. There's, they still recommend irrigation systems, but instead of like a head-to-head coverage, you can get away with a single head coverage and really expand like the water use out, so it uses way less, but you still use it. It, it's just, it's astronomically expensive to install.
I know there's a neighborhood in Windsor that they restrict how much turf grass you can put in, big lots too, right? And so people end up putting artificial turf in their backyard, so that's why I was like.
Are they bluegrass a section and then beyond that section, it's all native? It needs to let it go native, because I noticed that's in there, that there's really no restrictions on native grass.
If it's hybridized for an arid environment, though, the, and again, I don't want to oversimplify the the legislative acts at the state level, but bluegrass and, and fescue are pretty water-intensive varieties that are used broad scale across all sorts of landscapes. From a water conservation standpoint to protect our water resources, that's probably not the highest and best use of that water. Whereas, uh, blue grama, buffalo grass, sinodon, the dogtuff variety that you see in, in the, uh, demonstration garden in front of the municipal services building, those are hybridized or native and they use a lot less water. So you can still have a green landscape that still can be, uh, attractive, but it's not necessarily the type of grass you would put for a high, uh, high-use area like, like sports or recreation or maybe not even for a park or picnic area. Um, so the idea is that it's for those non-functional areas, the space in front of municipal services building. It's a non-functional area, we're not, you don't see a lot of activity there, but it needs to have some sort of ground cover without paving the whole thing. So that's where it's going to those, the hybridized for an arid environment or a native species for that application.
Harvest, harvest and sage both with those developments, I think for all the, the required open spaces have the hybridized. And when they are naturally watered, they green up really well. You wouldn't want to play sports on them, because they're, they're thick, like it's early, nasty kind of brisley texture to it. But if you're just walking the dogs through it and it stays mode, it's not, it's not bad. You wouldn't know the difference. Yeah, so I, I don't suspect there's going to be. Nobody's going to pay attention to the state-regulated stuff on functional, non-functional, synthetic. We're going to cruise through all that until we start telling people what they can and can't water and what they can and can't plant. That's going to be a battle.
I, I think I'll be on vacation that, I'm just saying.
Sounds great, yeah.
And a, and a big part of it is going to be, you know, making sure we're, we're talking about, you know, what are, what are we required to address from that statute? It, it doesn't say that residential can't plant bluegrass, it says that you have, the municipalities have to regulate how it's irrigated. How we do that is the part that we're going to have to figure out.
Their water bill, that's what's regulating it right now, so.
Well, I think there's a lot of nuance to it in terms of how we regulate, because it could be the amount of area, it could be the amount of irrigation. Currently, our Landscape and Irrigation Design Manual talks about on residential lots for, for best practices, they're not requirements, but they're recommendations. How you design your hydro zones and your sprinkler system to make sure that your low water use areas get the right amount of water, but not too much, because if the plant's feet get wet, they're going to struggle or die. And conversely, if you're, if you've got a high-water use area like bluegrass, that's not getting enough irrigation on it, it's going to die. And it's not, neither one looks attractive. So dialing in, you know, where those areas are, how big are those areas, how much water needs to hit them? It's not going to prohibit attractive residential landscapes, but it will likely start to shift the paradigm on how people approach front yards, corner lots, the side yard, is that bluegrass, probably not. It might be a different variety of grass that's low water use, or we might use, you see more rock mulch, fiber mulch, other types of ground cover instead of all bluegrass.
I live on a corner lot, I built my fence to the sidewalk, so. It's all bluegrass or whatever it is. But, I mean, yeah, no, that makes sense, I just, so will this, these changes, will that affect the new developments that have already gone through this process then?
So the, the, there's two timelines, and I'll address both, right? So the first one is just for prohibiting non-functional turf and all new commercial light industrial, streetscapes, et cetera. So after that takes effect, you know, with effective date of January one, twenty twenty-six, it says no app, no new shall be installed, so that will be effective January one of twenty twenty-six. Uh, that doesn't apply to residential landscapes, that's a second effort that we would just discussed that will have a different set of parameters and a different timeline on it. So any, any new projects coming in, um, would, if it's before that's adopted and it takes effective, would be fine. Keep in mind that that first compliance timeline for, um, the prohibitions on non-functional turf, that's not likely going to have a huge impact, because all those projects for commercial streetscapes, et cetera, go through a site development plan review process or plan review process already. And we're, we already have an irrigation design manual that says, don't put bluegrass and fescue in these areas. They should be low water use or mulch or some other landscape treatment. So a lot of that for the commercial aspects are already in place, we need to update for consistency of language um, and making it clear that it's prohibited, not just a guidance recommendation, but it, it's unlikely to have dramatic impacts to, um, new developments from that regard. Um, not wanting to be remiss, there's a possibility for streetscapes where we have new subdivisions that are proposed, where they've got bluegrass or fescue on one side of the street and the other side is an ag field and not constructed or developed yet. That's likely to create some questions on what's the right approach there. If it, if the new legislation, the new code requirements prohibits, um, the non-functional turf in those areas, they may have to be looking at like a, uh, the hybridized or adapted to a non, or to an arid environment on the other side of the street that won't look exactly the same. Um, so we'll have to navigate how to approach that from a design perspective. You typically don't like to see a street corridor that has two completely different treatments on different sides. So there'll definitely be some rollout in, in navigating things like streetscapes on, you know, continuity consistency for the corridor.
Okay, that's all I had.
I can think of where you're talking about. That's problematic.
Yeah, yeah, and, and there's, you know, this, that's, that's an element that we're going to have to navigate too. Um, you know, this is a new legislation, a lot of communities across the state, well, all communities across the state are dealing with the same legislation we are. It's not unique to Wellington or Northern Colorado, it's statewide. What we've found, if anything, when new legislation rolls out on any topic, when you start to implement it, communities ask questions, learn different things and the guidance changes. So we expect that there may be iterative approaches on this where maybe an exemption exists for, you know, corridor consistency. Um, and we'll, we'll have to evaluate if that's, you know, makes the code or if it's addressed, you know, in some other way. But those types of questions are going to come up and we'll find ways to, to navigate that with the state.
And should we expect to see more of this? I know there was a ton of land use legislation that went through, but not all of it would be applicable to the town simply by population. Is there stuff that will be seen that will affect like building code and things like that or no?
Yeah, so, so this wasn't, not the same, uh, subject for, for this presentation, but, but at a high level, yes, there was, there's quite a bit of legislative changes, a lot of it around housing affordability, energy, some building codes. Um, not all of them are applicable to Wellington, but a lot of them are. And so we are navigating quite a few different legislative requirements for housing, land use, energy, building codes. Um, and some other areas too. Our planning team is tracking eleven different acts that we have to comply with within the next three years and ongoing requirements after that. So there, there's a lot of them, um, but, uh, we're navigating each one of them and we're trying to kind of keep them uh, separated a little bit so that they don't get confusing on which one was required for what.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any, I'm just. I like the public hearing ideas for the first, keep them separate with a short timeframe. I think we wrap those up and present them, that way we can get them done by the end of the year. And then dive in to the next, the residential stuff will be a little bit more complicated.
It will be, um, and there's a lot more to think about there. Um, the prohibitions are pretty straightforward, uh, the, how we regulate irrigation is a, there's a lot of different pieces to that. Do the wells get treated differently, where communities with non-pots might be treated differently than areas that are on town water. One of those regulations could include drought restrictions or restrictions on watering days during a drought. Like, those are all regulations for irrigation that we can navigate and find the right fit. And I suspect there's a reason why we, we push this to, uh, or recommend in doing it in twenty twenty-seven for end of twenty-seven compliance. We suspect that there's going to We suspect that there's going to be more guidance on best practices that roll out. So we don't want to get too far in front of it and then learn that we can do it again. So we'll, we'll navigate this, this topic as time goes on. Um, but for October, we will be looking for just the prohibitions portion as well as we'll probably advertise for the electric vehicle charging permit requirements that we also have to do by end of the year. We presented that at the last meeting, so we'll probably bring both of those together for October.
That works.
Cool. I can't wait.
All right. Well, that's my presentation. Thank you for the questions and the discussion.
Thanks, Ms. Rude. I'll let you take a seat before I ask you if there are any communications from staff for this meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. I probably could have done it from the podium.
Probably.
Uh, no, the only communications um that I was going to share were just that the October sixth Planning Commission meeting is our next meeting. We're currently working on putting notices out for public hearing for the turf grass prohibitions and for EV charging permit reviews. Um, so that's what we can expect for October.
Sounds good. Anything else? Beautiful. Jurn.